Half a day. Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the Guam Congress Building. The Committee on Health, Land, Justice and Culture is now called to order. Today is Monday, August 26, 2024, and the time is 4:25 PM. Thank you for your patience and being here today for this hearing scheduled. I'm sorry, it's 5:25, not 4:25. For this hearing scheduled, 5:25. As you know, we are in budget, so it's hard to predict. But thank you again for your patience. In compliance with the open government law, notice for this public hearing was published in the Guam Daily Post and posted to the government of Guam Public Notice Portal on Monday, August 19, and Friday, August 23, 2024. Notice was also sent by email to all senators and all main media broadcasting outlets. This hearing is being live streamed on the Guam Legislature's YouTube channel. I'd like to thank Senator Canata for joining me today, Sisus Masi, Senator. There's really only a couple of rules of conduct. One is please state your name if you are testifying, so we're going to transcribe these proceedings, and that way we'll be able to make sure to acknowledge the correct speaker to the comments. Also, let me just welcome Senator Jesse Lujan as well, Sisus Masi, Senator Lujan. The other one is just, we've got a packed room today. I'm glad, but please let's then try to just keep our distractions from those who are speaking to a minimum if possible. We're going to try to keep the doors quiet if we can, but we'll hear first from those who are going to testify on this nomination, and then we will hear from the nominee herself. So again, we have one agenda item today. That is the appointment of Teresa Ariola to serve as the Director of the Department of Public Health and Social Services at the pleasure of the governor. Pursuant to Title V, Chapter 3, "The Director of the Department of Public Health and Social Services is appointed by Imaaga Haga Guahan with the advice and consent of Ilihas Latura." The Director shall meet the following minimum qualifications. Shall have graduated from a recognized college or university with a master's degree in health administration, healthcare service management, human service or a health-related field, and five years of experience in the management and administration of a human service, social service, or healthcare service organization, of which three years shall have been experienced as an administrator or director in human service, social service, or healthcare service organization. Or shall have graduated from a recognized college or university with a master's degree in business administration or public admin, and five years of experience in health administration, human service, social service, or healthcare service organization, of which three years must have been experienced as an administrator or director in a public health setting, human service, social service, or healthcare service organization. Or shall have graduated from a recognized college or university with a bachelor's degree in business admin, public admin, health admin, healthcare service management, human service or health-related field, and eight years of experience in health administration or healthcare-related field, of which five years shall have been experienced as an administrator or director in a public health, human service, social service, or healthcare service organization. So now we will begin, and we'd like to acknowledge as well Senator Teletitugui. Thank you, Senator, for being here. So we have the deputy. Well, not everyone has signed up for oral testimony. There are many of you signed up in support or otherwise. So if I call your name and you don't want to give oral testimony, that's okay too. All right. So Deputy Ugin, Deputy Director Ugin, Don Sula, Joseph Cameron, Kathy Dominguez, Leonora Urbano, Juanet Quintaniza, Alicia Gueking, Alan Anka, Lisa Lujan, former Deputy Director Lauren Sorry, the writing's not clear, but it looks like Dan Robert Barreg and John A. Cruz. Let me also welcome Senator Joanne Brown, Vice Chair of the Committee on Health, Antonette Batista, Linda Yamaguchi, Peter John Camacho, former director, Wakin Blas, Janet Cruz, Gerard Paredes, Heidi Lujan, Verlaine Calio, Gabrielle Kengat, Caitlin Champaco, Bertha Tyron, Tom Is there anyone else who I didn't call who would like to testify? Oh, sorry. Is there anyone else? There's Monica Guzman, Vanessa Ampinko. Anyone else who would like to testify verbally? If not, all right, I'd also like to acknowledge that we do have written testimony, and these have been passed to the senators present. We have one from Margarita Batista Gay, Sisus Masi for putting that in writing. We also have one. These all came together in a packet from Public Health. One is from Terry Ugin, the Deputy Director of Public Health. One is from Peter John Camacho, the Deputy Director of Public Health. And Wakin Blas, the Acting Chief of Administration Division of General Administration, Department of Public Health and Social Services. And Don RJ Sula, Public Information Officer from Department of Public Health. Okay, so now we will begin. Trying to remember who was first. Terry Ugin, you were first, so you may be. And welcome to the nominee, Teresa, and to all your family and friends who are here today and your colleagues over many years. Deputy Director, please be here.
Thank you. Half a day Speaker Terlahe and members of the 37th Guam Legislature. I am Terry G. Ugin, Deputy Director of the Department of Public Health and Social Services. It is with great pleasure that I address the 37th Guam Legislature and my commitment and support in the nomination of Teresa C. Ariola as the Director of the Department of Public Health and Social Services. In her short time with Public Health, Acting Director Ariola has made it clear that she is progressive in her vision and passionate in her commitment to make healthcare and welfare services manageable and accessible to Guam's children and families. She calls her perspective "fresh eyes," looking through the lens of families we serve to make it easier to access services when working with our department. According to Acting Director Ariola, it begins with making that extra effort to make continuous and sustainable changes to increase health equity outcomes. Acting Director Ariola is committed in assisting the people of Guam in achieving and maintaining their highest levels of independence and self-sufficiency in health and social welfare. To simplify, she is invested in the healthy minds and bodies with safeguards to protect our most vulnerable populations, our children, our Manoncos, and those living with disabilities regardless of age. She brings a strong background of behavioral health institutional knowledge that complements the efforts to improve the overall health for our island's people. As the previous Director of Guam Behavioral Health and Wellness Center, Acting Director Ariola was able to vacate the 14-year-old federal receivership in December of 2019. See, the department threw two successful CARF reaccreditations in 2021 and in 2024. Reopened Guam Behavioral Health and Wellness Center's detox unit, which hosts up to 16 beds after being closed for some 17 years. Stabilized and obtained renewal license of the department's pharmacy, as well as hired the department's first full-time pharmacist. Stand up the department's billing office and established for the first time the department's student loan repayment program. Before vacating her position as the Director of the Guam Behavioral Health and Wellness Center, Acting Director Ariola, in partnership with the Department of Public Health and Social Services Division of Children's Wellness, established in 2024 a $6.4 million program for services for children, which include the first autism program, a therapeutic foster families program, mobile crisis team program for children, and the continuation of mental health services for detained children at the Department of Youth Affairs. Acting Director Ariola is not new to the challenges facing Guam's youth and families. As the previous Director of Sanctuary, a youth facility initially established in 1971 as an alternative to juvenile justice systems for runaway, homeless, neglected, and abused youth. She valued the existence of this community-based organization and the reunification of families. The Department of Public Health and Social Services plays a critical role in the preventative health of men, women, and children in our island. Through local and federal partnerships, Acting Director Ariola pledges an aggressive campaign to address the leading causes of death on our island: heart disease, cancer, and diabetes. Acting Director Ariola comes to the Department of Public Health with a strong background in the areas of child welfare. She shares in the evidence-based approach of being family-focused and child-centered when addressing the welfare of our children. In the two and a half months that Acting Director Ariola has been with the department, she has taken the steps towards quality improvement and quality assurance to improve customer service. This includes training the Department of Public Health and Social Services staff to better serve the community. Public Health continues to be Guam's lead agency in addressing global public health emergencies and building local and federal partnerships. Acting Director Ariola is posed to move forward to prepare for public health emergencies. Her inclusiveness values the highly diverse, multilingual, multicultural workforce. Confirming Acting Director Ariola as the Director of the Department of Public Health and Social Services will only strengthen the mission and duty of the departments to increase self-sufficiency of those we serve. It is without condition and reservation that I fully support the confirmation of Teresa C. Ariola as the Director of the Guam Department of Public Health and Social Services. Thank you.
Sisus Masi, Deputy Director Ugin. We also have with us the Deputy Director Peter John Camacho. The Department of Public Health and Social Services is one of the few agencies, maybe the only one in the government of Guam, that has two deputy directors. We're pleased to have both of you here today. Peter John Camacho.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Buenas, Madam Chairperson and members of the committee. My name is Peter John Camacho, Deputy Director for the Department of Public Health and Social Services. I am here to offer my thoughts on the nomination of Teresa C. Ariola.
Can you move the microphone closer? They're getting signals. Thank you. Just pull it close, all the way. Yeah, thank you.
As the next Director for this department, I did not know Teresa personally in the past. I had heard about what a great professional and hard worker she is. After my retirement, I worked briefly with her in her capacity as a member of the Board of Directors with Catholic Social Service. She contributed to our mission in many ways and just seemed so busy. And then she left us to assume the leadership at Sanctuary. Fast forward to June 2024, when she joined the DPHSS family and then began for her a literal whirlwind of multiple activities. First major was to lead the DPHSS during our budget discussions. Unfazed by her unfamiliarity with the details of the DPHSS operations, she began her immersion into public health and social service programs. She attended Zoom meetings, went to conferences to learn about federal programs available to DPHSS, and engaged, especially with staff. As we know, on our small island, we share an interconnectedness that oftentimes means challenges, process hiccups, and problems arise and are brought to her attention. She'd meet with program staff to get a sense of what the issues were and what needed to be done. In her off-island conferences, she's learned of new opportunities that can benefit, be of benefit, I'm sorry. Sorry. To our community, she is driven by her sense of what is the right thing to do, especially for our most vulnerable individuals. And along with that is her caring for her staff. The best example I have observed is during the recent innovative readiness training at the Guam Community College. On the last day, we visited, and she personally thanked our staff, who were there providing services, which is appropriate, yes? But then she humbly apologized to them for not having visited them at their respective workplaces, but she promised them she would. You could see the appreciation. I humbly request this committee to recommend to the entire legislative body confirming Teresa C. Ariola as the next DPHSS Director. Thank you.
Sisus Masi, Deputy Director Camacho. My apologies to everyone, but we're having some technical difficulties of broadcasting this, as we promised, so we're going to take about a three-minute recess and see if they can resolve it. If they cannot, in that time, we're going to record it, and we're going to have to rebroadcast it right afterward. All right. Sisus Masi, to our audio team, we're back with audio online, so we will continue. And thank you for your patience again. And next, we will have Don Sula from Department of Public Health and Social Services.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Half a day, todos samos zantiro, members of the Guam Legislature. My name is Don Sula, and I serve as the Department of Public Health and Social Services Public Information Officer. I'm here to voice my support in the appointment of Teresa C. Ariola as the Director of the Guam Department of Public Health and Social Services. Prior to serving the people of Guam in this capacity, I had the privilege of serving and informing our people as a journalist. During my time as a journalist, I made it a point to highlight programs geared towards enhancing the quality of life of our people. As a men's mental health advocate, I had the honor to provide information about Guam Behavioral Health's 988 call hotline and talk about services such as Project Tuleika. Little did I know, years later, I would have the honor of working with the director who spearheaded these programs. Now, here I am sitting before you today, having the privilege to inform the people of Guam about the good and hard work that the Department of Public Health and Social Services provide for our community. Acting Director Ariola, when she came to DPHSS two and a half months ago, came ready to serve and ready to promote the good work this department does. During her time as Acting Director, I had the privilege of working alongside her to promote Guam's second innovative readiness training medical wellness mission, bringing much-needed medical services to our people at no cost to them. Most recently, I also had the chance to highlight the distribution of pandemic electronic benefit transfer, or PEBT, cards to our island students. In her short time with this department, Acting Director Ariola continues to push the envelope and methods to better serve our people. It is with great pleasure that I reiterate some of the first words she said to me in one of our early meetings: strive for excellence. To conclude, I encourage this body to confirm Teresa C. Ariola as the next Director of DPHSS. Thank you.
Sisus Masi, Mr. Sula. All right. We now have Margarita Batista Gay.
Sisus Masi, Senator Teresa Terlahe, and fellow 37 Guam Legislature Senators here today. My name is Margarita Batista Gay. I am an RN, Administrator for the Bureau of Family Health and Nursing Services at the Department of Public Health and Social Service. While overseeing the Title V Maternal and Child Health Program, Pediatric Mental Healthcare Access Grant, Project Besicca y Familia, and Home Visiting Program, and managing the Central Public Health Clinic temporarily at the Northern Health Center. I have been an administrator for the Bureau of Family Health and Nursing Services since 2005, and started at the Central Public Health Center, which we are still at Room 30 in the Northern Health Clinic in Dedido. Thank you for this opportunity to provide testimony in favor of Mrs. Teresa C. Ariola to be our next Director for the Department of Public Health. Just by my opening statement, you can see that I have been at the department for almost 20 years, and being one of the oldest staff in the department, I invested most of my GovGuam working experience with the Department of Public Health and Guam Memorial Hospital. I also had the privilege to work with Ms. Ariola at previous area with at-risk communities of troubled children, runaway youth, homeless adolescents, or youth who were facing broken family structure. I worked with her in many community outreaches and public health programs, but I worked with Ms. Ariola, educating her staff on common health hazards when dealing with at-risk youth and their living condition. I educated her staff annually and learned a lot about working with troubled youth and challenges. I have seen Ms. Ariola branch out to bigger departments with more challenges, clients, and environment. I commend her for all her accomplishments within her last directorship at the Department of Behavioral Health and Wellness Center. I have been a partner with the department as a project director, working with I have been a partner with the department as a project director, working with families who needed help and and with domestic violence and substance abuse. I worked with her staff there before, during, and after COVID. They were there to help the community, and they gave me the experience working with adults with substance abuse and behavioral health assessment, diagnosis, and treatment and care. When I last met with her staff in March 2024, we discussed the new and motivating program that will be started, how they partnered with the University of Arizona to hire and work together to bring psychiatrists and other behavioral health specialists to work and educate our and join our Guam Behavioral Health staff. They have written and managed many new grant programs to work with children's mental health and families that have opened more shelters, homes, to work with the clients with substance abuse and other related disorders. Ms. Ariola has shown the leadership skills to build the department and improve their services to meet the needs of the people of Guam. And I welcome her to our department to help us manage more opportunities to assist our communities meeting the needs of of their of their to live a healthy life and safe life on Guam. We, the Department of Public Health, have dedicated employees who have who would do any would do everything to to help our clients from getting a shelter, food, transportation, and healthcare needs. We have excellent and well-experienced grant writers to apply more grants to help our island get on the right track with a good start. We need a leader to keep our motivation, to continue our fight to the healthy and brighter tomorrow. With Ms. Ariola's healthcare experience, with working with healthcare providers, her educational background, her management skills, and working with many community partners around the island, I see her leading us to upward path of success in promoting health practices, preventing communicable and non-communicable diseases, promote more awareness with well-child health visits, annual checkups, proper diet, healthy lifestyles, supporting us in all our public health programs to a island with a longer and healthy future. I strongly support Mrs. Teresa C. Ariola in confirming her as our new Director with the Department of Public Health to continue our mission as public servants. Thank you for this opportunity for me to present and submit this testimony.
Sisus Masih. All right, is there anyone else who would like to present testimony? All right, Director, do you have a written testimony I could pass out to the Senators? I think my staff asked, but they said none. Okay. All right, you may proceed. We, yeah, I think my staff asked earlier, but so they don't have a copy, just to let you know, but please proceed. All right.
Hafadei Health Committee Chair, Speaker Teresa Terlai. Members of the Committee on Health, Senators of the 37th Guam Legislature, thank you for this opportunity to come before you. Before I proceed, please allow me to acknowledge those who have joined me this afternoon: my husband Vince, my Cruz and Ariola family members, colleagues, friends, the Jibwick and Public Health family that joined me today, and those that sent me messages of love and submission of testimony. To all of you, I am so humbled and touched by your love, support, and presence. Senators, buenos and good afternoon. For the record, my name is Teresa C. Ariola, a daughter of Guam who simply believes that every person deserves to live a healthy, peaceful, and purpose-driven life. I am guided with deep faith in God and the moral value of Inaflamaale, to make things better every single day. I am honored to appear before you as Governor Lou Leon Guerrero and Lieutenant Governor Josh Tenorio's nominee for Director of the Department of Public Health and Social Services. My heartfelt appreciation and gratitude to Maga Haagat Leon Guerrero and Sekundu Magat Lahin Tenorio for their trust and confidence in my ability to lead one of government's largest line agency with 529 dedicated employees whose mission is to assist the people of Guam in achieving and maintaining their highest level of independence and self-sufficiency in health and social welfare. I come to you with 30 years of management experience, over 20 years of federal grant management and administrative experience, and a master's in business administration in marketing and a bachelor's in science degree in management and marketing. For the last five and a half years, I've had the honor and privilege of being the Director of Guam Behavioral Health and Wellness Center. In partnership with my then-deputy, its current acting director, Carissa Pangolinan, and a dedicated team of hard-working employees, we moved Jibwick as being a sleeping giant to a high-performing agency of the government of Guam. Allow me to please highlight a few of our greatest accomplishments. In five and a half years, a decade-long federal receivership was lifted. CARF re-accreditation was attained twice. A 25-year-close detox unit was reopened. A pharmacy in the brink of losing its license has hired its first full-time pharmacist and shored up its processes. A billing department was established that brought in over $1 million of reimbursements that was never realized before. Workforce development initiatives was established for the first time ever. In partnership with WICHE, a psychology doctoral internship program was stood up and will be seeking its accreditation in a year. A psychiatry resident doctor partnership with the University of New Mexico was launched. A student loan repayment program that provides college debt forgiveness to professional positions was attained. For the first time ever, Jibwick and Public Health Division of Children's Wellness establish a partnership that provides $6.4 million of childcare development fund support that allowed for the establishment of Jibwick's first-ever autism program, adult child-to-adult mobile crisis response services, mental health continued services to DYA, and paid therapeutic foster family services. In less than two years, Jibwick's new beginning drug and alcohol program will be opening its doors to a beautiful building designed with healing and hope in mind. With the right number of group therapy rooms and counseling offices, and last but not least, Jibwick stood up successfully the island's 988 suicide and crisis hotline, while many states today still struggle to do so. Most of these accomplishments were attained while I while our island struggled through the COVID pandemic years, where Jibwick was in the forefront, providing much-needed emotional and mental health services to our residents. I am so proud of all that we have done as a team at Jibwick and want to thank the Jibwick family for their trust in my leadership. Aside from filling the qualifications set forth in statute, I believe it's my results-oriented, thinking outside-the-box attitude that positioned me to be considered by the Leon Guerrero Tenorio Administration for this position as Director of Public Health and Social Services, an offer that I did not take lightly and took a few months to consider and accept. Public Health and Social Services is a large department that touches many lives, a department made out of six divisions: Division of Public Health, Division of Environmental Health, Division of Children's Wellness, Division of Senior Citizens, Division of Public Welfare, and the Division of General Administration Operation. In addition, Public Health has oversight of the Health Professional Licenseure Office, the administrative arm of 10 health licensing boards. With its widespread reach in the community, Public Health is often asked to provide input by the community at large and by all branches of government, which finds itself very often in the news. Unfortunately, some news we do recognize as self-inflicted and unfavorable to the department. I hope to help change this challenged image before us. Public Health, as I as I see it, is the Santa Claus of agencies. We provide primary care services, safety measures for our community, shelter, respite, protection to our precious children and our elderly Manomko population. We provide monetary assistance, food, and insurance to those struggling the most in our community. It is baffling to me how an agency that is responsible in providing so many much-needed services to so many of our residents has such a challenging image in the community. Since being appointed in June, I've been reviewing the many processes on how to do business, how we do business as a department. It is clear that we have many areas to improve on when it comes to efficiency, but I am very, very hopeful. There is not a single employee that I have spoken to that is not open to the changes of improvement before us. Each dedicated employee wants to work smarter, not harder. Each are tired of the negative remarks towards them or their employer, and each understand that only we ourselves can make that change. To address this, I plan to reintroduce Public Health to the community as a department that exists to serve and privileged and happy to do so every day. Since June, I have directed and ensured that all program offices that serve the public face-to-face are actually open eight to five, to include lunch hour, as expected by our residents. Unfortunately, some fell short, but today, we are definitely open. Division chiefs and bureau heads have been instructed to assess and ensure that friendly, customer-service-oriented staff are placed in direct service positions and to ensure that all 529 employees are prepared to serve in this new culture. I have instructed that all current employees and those newly hired undergo customer service training as part of their onboarding process. This is currently being procured, and my goal is to get everyone through this training in six months and ongoing for new hires. To address the need to improve efficiency of service, the department secured the Public Health Infrastructure Grant that will strengthen our infrastructure processes, workforce, and data systems. Also, the department will access technical assistance with recruitment through a Department of Interior Grant that was awarded to ASTO. Public Health has the technical assistance support it requires to ensure improvement of processes is attained. Probably one of the more exciting efforts that will come out of the FIG funding that the department effort that the department's effort is the department's effort to prepare and seek accreditation from the Public Health Accreditation Board. Attaining accreditation will ensure transparency and boost public trust as the department improves to meet national standards and strive for excellence in providing providing quality service. The accreditation process is daunting, but something I am very familiar with and look forward to begin. I am pleased to report that we have interviewed and will be finalizing the selection of an accreditation consultant that I will be asking to immediately prepare for a mock survey to confirm the areas of improvement and set a starting point. Another concern that directly impacts the department's ability to work efficiently for our people is the fact that we are in 17 different locations. Program offices are located in multiple buildings in Hagatnia, Tamooning, and in Mingilau. To be more consumer-focused, it is essential that all, if not majority, of our department's divisions, bureaus, and bureaus are in one location. And for the first time, a one-stop, one-stop Public Health and Social Services center will be available. This, of course, does not include the Northern Dedido and Southern Inurahan Community Centers as well as the Dedido mosquito lab. To better serve our community, we must put ourselves in the shoes of those we serve and ensure that social determinants of health they struggle with, like lack of money, lack of transportation, childcare concerns, are considered when we serve them. I am exploring a larger footprint facility that can accommodate all, if not most, of our offices, to include the planned one-stop service center. An RFP is currently in review at GSA. For the Division of Public Health, I am also excited to share that I am working with Dr. Jolene Uggan to stand up a primary care executive checkup program that would include screening for TB, HIV, tobacco use, as well as high-risk pregnancy and cardiology services, to name a few. This would be a new service that the department would launch and would assist in strengthening preventive preventive services to our residents. The goal is to increase primary care services at our clinics, ultimately reducing the visit to hospitals for these services. To address the need for more maternal practitioners in our health clinics, Public Health is currently in discussion with two interested medical providers that have OB-GYN experience or specialty. Both have expressed great interest in providing services at our health clinics. Employment is in the immediate future. Bringing back the dentist program to our community health centers is another top priority of mine, a program that once was available but no longer being offered. While in elementary school, I recall going to public health to get preventive cleaning and fluoride treatments. We are moving quickly in this area as we are in the process of hiring a dentist to jumpstart this program. In addition, I have spoken to my colleagues in the U.S. Virgin Islands that stood up a dentistry resident program with the New York University to ensure more hands are available. This is a model that I am very familiar with and aggressively exploring. If the U.S. Virgin Islands can do it, so can Guam. This dental program will be launched in October of this year during Primary Care Week, October 6th to the 12th. This will be in collaboration with Public Health Division of Children's Wellness, the Bureau of Primary Care Services, and the Bureau of Non-communicable Disease. The launch will begin with a fluoride varnish program, varnish program targeting children under five years old who are enrolled in the Head Start program, attend daycares, and receive immunizations at outreaches. Fluoride varnish is the standard of care to prevent dental tooth decay, which is caused by plaque and bacteria. We are in the process of hiring a dental program coordinator who will coordinate and collaborate with the Guam Dental Association, other public health programs and entities of interest. This coordinator will also explore federal funding opportunities with the American Academy of Pediatric Dentistry Foundation and the Access to Care Grant for salary supplement of dentists and dental staff. During the governor's recent health workforce collaborative meeting, we spoke to Guam USDA staff that will provide assistance in our application to the USDA Community Facilities Program to purchase a public health dental mobile unit. This rebirth of public health dental program is well on its way. Public Health Laboratory and Training Facility, funded by the Department of Defense dollars, this facility is ready to be built in Mingilau, near the University of Guam and GCC campuses, with the environmental assessment process coming to a completion. Presentation to the Mingilau community through their MMPC is scheduled to take place next month in September, with a site dedication before the end of the year, very possible in October. Construction of the facility is scheduled to take place February of next year. Public Health Lab staff, the office of the governor, the Community Defense Lausanne Office of the governor, the Department of Public Works, the federal funder of the project, the project consultants have been meeting regularly to ensure that this brick-and-mortar project that will not only benefit our community as well as our region continues to move forward in good pace. With the Division of Public with the Division of Children's Wellness, I am happy to say that Public Health will be seeking Title IV E Foster Care Program. I am happy to say that public health will be seeking Title IV-E foster care program funding. This funding will provide funds to assist with the cost of foster care maintenance for eligible children, administrative costs to manage the program, and training for staff and foster parents.
I'm sorry, um, let's just, okay, please proceed.
Under this program, eligible foster care cases can receive reimbursement based on Guam's federal medical assistance percentage, or M map, F map. Furthermore, Title IV-E includes an adoption assistance program designed to encourage the adoption of children with special needs. This program provides financial support to adoptive families, facilitating a smoother transition for those children into permanent homes and enhancing their overall well-being and stability within the foster care system. Title IV-E funding will require collaboration with the judicial branch that is very open to such partnership. With the Division of Senior Citizens, the lack of home care services for our elderly loved ones is a big concern for many today. The days when a family member can stay home and watch our young infants and elderly is practically extinct. Most families require all adults to work. We are looking into the ability to employ a family member to watch their elderly loved one with the help of Medicaid, as well as strengthening and lengthening home care service visits. Under the Division Environmental Health, my immediate focus since coming to the department has been the safety and health inspection of schools. Here we are in August where our DEH inspectors are hard at work inspecting schools, which is required by law to pass before opening their doors. Special thanks to the team approach as DEH works with GDOE, who is working with the governor's SORT school opening readiness teams to get all DOE schools open as soon as possible. As for this morning, we have twenty-six schools, bless you, that have passed their inspections and are allowed by law to open. GDOE has a goal of September to open the remaining twelve schools, and we are working side by side making this possible. Since early August discussions, we have opened eight more schools. Be assured that signing off on health and safety of schools is something I do not take lightly and will never compromise. To address the shortage of environmental health practitioners that the division has been struggling with for years, DEH has been working with UOG and GCC in developing a career path for interested individuals to pursue a career in environmental health. This includes recently created environmental technician aid position for students straight out of high school who has the opportunity to obtain a certificate, a certificate program with GCC to qualify for the next technical level positions. In addition, GCC is collaborating with UOG to establish an associate's degree program that will allow students in the program to seamlessly transition into the bachelor's program in UOG to enable these students to qualify for the professional level positions of DEH. In addition, this department is developing draft-proposed legislation with input from UOG to formalize this concept that includes awarding of scholarships to qualifying students for preferential hiring straight into Division of Environmental Health. This is a long-term solution. For immediate action, the department is promoting the field and the profession of environmental health by attending job fairs, visiting, and giving presentations to GCC and UOG students and using our social media platform, and of course, we are continually recruiting for more environmental health practitioners. All of this has been initiated or fostered through the Governor's Health Workforce Collaborative that started in December of last year. Prior to this, the difficulty in hiring qualified environmental health staff was a concern, but now we have a path forward through, through the involvement of several partners of the collaborative. Under the Division of Public Welfare, the Division of Public Welfare plays a critical role in providing financial, nutritional, and medical assistance to our people. The division's beneficiaries include low-income households, many of our children, and individual, and individuals with disabilities. We deliver over three hundred million, mostly federal dollars, annually to our community, which helps needy households support our healthcare system, creates jobs, and generate tax revenue. For nearly fifty years, Guam and other territories have ranked among the lowest for the U.S. jurisdictions. Ranking are more than just numbers on a piece of paper. They reflect a program that leaves our beneficiaries and providers with less than we could deliver. I do not find this acceptable and will be working hand-in-hand with the hard-working staff of the division to improve this status. They are ready. Recently, I had the opportunity to attend a Medicaid information technology conference and the CMS territorial Medicaid summit, where I engaged with hundreds of Medicaid staff, CMS officials, and industry partners. During these two events, Guam Medicaid staff and I had a great, had great opportunities to have deep discussions with experts focusing on how we can deliver better services to our beneficiaries, better relationship with our providers, and stronger and more efficient Medicaid program through the implementation of improved technology. Participation in these events is part of our planning for significant improvements to Medicaid that we seek to implement in the very near future. Over the next few years, as early as in the, as early as in the incoming months, we will be moving forward with key initiatives to improve our technology and bring system improvements our whole community will benefit from, including engaging a pharmacy benefits manager, upgrading our Medicaid eligibility and enrollment information technology system, engaging a project management consultant, and establishing a Medicaid advisory committee. Engaging a pharmacy benefits manager will improve Medicaid operations, deliver better service to our beneficiaries and to our prescribing and pharmacy providers. The pharmacy benefits manager will use an automated claims processing system and will ensure that prior authorizations and claims will be processed more quickly, reduce waste and abuse, operate a 24/7 call center, and will generate program income of several millions of dollars by allowing for the participation in the Medicaid drug rebate program. The COFA migrant population's enrollment in Medicaid has outpaced expectation. So this additional program income, estimated in the millions, can be used to offset some of the costs of the COFA expansion. The pharmacy benefits manager will also improve the timeliness of processing other claims for Medicaid services. We will make sure that our existing pharmacy providers are covered, prior authorizations and claims are processed expeditiously, payments are prompt, and that reimbursements for drugs will not decline. We will be implementing an innovative cloud-based automated eligibility and enrollment system, which will serve Medicaid and the needs of other public welfare programs, including SNAP and the cash assistance programs where eligibility is determined under the Bureau of Economic Security in less than a year. Special thanks to the Office of the Governor for providing 1.9 million in ARP funding for this purchase of the ENE system and summer EBT system. Thanks also goes to, thanks also goes out to Vice Speaker Tina Rose Munia Barnes and the rest of the members of the Thirty-Seventh Guam Legislature with the passage of Public Law 37107. This automated, this automated eligibility and enrollment system should allow the Bureau of Economic Security to rapidly eliminate its backlog of eligibility determination for Medicaid, SNAP, and the cash assistance programs, meaning that when a qualified household applies for Medicaid, they will immediately know they qualify. Enrollment in Medicaid must bring beneficiaries and providers together to make sure patients get the care they need rather than keeping them apart. We will also establish a relationship with the experience, with an experienced Medicaid project management consultant, which will elevate our Medicaid business processes, the Guam Medicaid state plan, and technology to find opportunities for improvements, enhance benefits, and expansion to reduce our uninsured population. Finally, we'll be establishing a Medicaid advisory committee and beneficiary council to bring stakeholders, including beneficiaries and providers, to advise me on policy and effective administration of the Guam Medicaid program. These groups, these groups will be the opportunity for members of the community to come together and discuss issues that are faced by providers or beneficiaries and ideas about how we could make the Medicaid program more responsive to our people's needs. Establishing this forum is sorely needed today if public health really wants to hear from the people they serve. Lastly, but definitely not least, the Health Professional Licenseure Office. HPLO is the administrative support arm of ten health licensing boards. Currently, HPLO office has been without a permanent administrator, and I am happy to, happy to report that as critical as this position is, I am immediately recruiting for a permanent classified HPLO lead. Through personal experience, the HPLO website to include fees and processes is in great need of updating. To better serve our professionals seeking a license to provide services to our community, a regularly updated website is critical for, for professionals to submit their licenses, license applications without delay due to outdated information listed and would be a priority of mine to see to the finish. Senators, besides efficient and timely service to our consumers, taking care of my employees is the top, is one of my top priorities. I believe a workforce that is providing, that provides for the necessary tools and clear direction to do efficient work is paramount for this Santa Claus of an agency to run well. Coming from the behavioral health arena, it is important that my staff feel acknowledged, appreciated, and accomplished at the end of the day instead of feeling frustrated or stressed because the pile of work is endless due to outdated technology and processes. Instead of staff staying back late without compensation at times just because of their dedication is not right. I need them to get home before the sun sets, have dinner at a decent hour with those they love so that returning in the morning and doing great rewarding work throughout the day is something they look forward to every day. I believe part of my job is to minimize those frustrating moments in the workplace. I have mentioned and have stated some of my immediate priorities. I have and will be focusing on in the immediate, if confirmed. The excitement, the excitement for process improvement is present and welcome throughout the department. The progress in the short period of time at the department would not be possible without the dedicated and hard-working public health and social service employees that I have had the privilege of meeting these past few months. The idea that many of our residents are suffering while some of us are comfortable is something that I have a hard time accepting and frankly breaks my heart. This is definitely the reason I have chosen a career in public service. I commit to you a leadership that is focused on results, firm and decisive, yet compassionate. I am committed to building capacity among the department's employees to ensure the most excellent service is provided to our people, for they deserve nothing less. Thank you for your time and good evening.
Sisios Masie, Director. Is it all right with you we make copies of that testimony? And I'll be doing that and passing it out while we ask some questions. All right, first, I'd like to read off the names of the other written testimony who we have received. Dr. Davina Luhon with GIPW, Staff Physician at Behavioral Health. Dr. Cooper Nurse, I think former, uh, employee at the Behavioral Health as well.
He's the deputy.
Deputy, currently?
Current.
Oh, currently deputy at the Guam Behavioral Health and Wellness Center. All right, um, Leonora Urbano. Psychiatric nursing administrator at Guam Behavioral Health and Wellness Center. Corinne May Fisher, Guam Behavioral Health pharmacist in charge. A.J. Ramus, Chief Operating Officer, West Care Pacific Islands. Dr. Ariel Ishmael, Staff Psychiatrist at Guam Behavioral Health and Wellness Center. And, yeah, Dr. Ishmael. All right, so those we have received prior to the hearing in, in writing. Okay, so if, if all of the panel doesn't mind waiting, in case the senators, I'll ask some questions and then the other senators will ask questions, okay? Ms. Ariel, can you confirm then that, um, it seems to me you qualify for the position under the statute that requires a master's degree in business admin or public admin and the five years of experience in health administration, human service, because you've been at Guam Behavioral Health for five years at minimum, correct?
Yes.
All right. Sisios Masie. All right, and thank you for your testimony. It's very comprehensive, and you touched on all the different departments of the Department of Public Health and Social Services and the work of all the employees. So again, thank you to all the employees for your work. She's correct that the department could not have all these successes without all of your hard work and vision a lot of times. So, um, if, all right, the, um, you, you testified at, well, no, I take it back. The, um, I had asked you during our budget proceedings whether you are okay with the budget for public health, and I believe the total amount is the same. There was a huge increase in federal grants, but there was a slight decrease in general fund appropriations for the department, and it was not your request. So you had requested seventy million from general fund. The current language in the bill is fifty-eight million. This is less than the sixty-five million of general fund from FY 2024. And I just want to ask you again, I guess, that you said we would be perfectly fine, and how do you intend to do that with that type of decrease?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. We'll be fine because of some recruitment challenges. We're going to realize lapses, and with the language that is currently in the budget law, the FY 24 rollover will carry forward. So we'll be fine.
All right, and then while we're on the budget, so there's like, the Division of Children's Wellness was specifically allocated last year. This year, it's not specifically named. Bolsa is specifically named in the budget. I don't have an issue with that. I'm sure Division of Children's Wellness will continue to receive a budget. So the way it currently works is that all of the appropriations will be going kind of lump sum to the division, I mean, sorry, the department, and that it would be up to you to allocate those. Uh, we have, you know, received, um, many or had many discussions and oversight hearings regarding challenges with CPS and challenges in environmental health. and challenges in environmental health, of course, hiring and the hiring of social workers, also the ability to contract for the foster care home or the children's home with an outside so that these social workers can, at CPS, can come back to their regular duties and help us to find placements for these children. We've also heard about HPLO in great need of investigators and legal hearings officers and other legal assistants. So it's kind of, I just want to hear from you, I guess. Do you foresee any, if you talk to them, these different divisions about this budgeting and how you would allocate it? And do you see any challenges in that regard? Or how are we going to be able to improve in those divisions, particularly where we've heard of the issues that they're having?
Well, as she mentioned, if the budget is coming before us in pretty much a lump sum, I'll definitely be looking and working with the different divisions to ensure that the current programs are funded. And like anything else, if I have the flexibility of moving the funding around, which I do very much appreciate, it's a management tool that I can use, then we can move monies around as we realize some lapses. And as you know, the minute October 1 hits, we're going to realize lapses because we don't really hire on the first day. So I think we'll be fine. I have a, I feel in the last two and a half months, I have a very good working relationship with the division chiefs and so I think we'll be, I think we'll be fine. I have not heard anybody come up to me and of great concern or set the alarms so of the concern for the current budget. All right, well, that was submitted.
Well, we had received concerns and I think they were even expressed in the media. This is the thing regarding HPLO and that they're, it's not clear to me that this current allocation. So there is an allocation in the budget particularly for HPLO, but it, they might need more than that from the department's budget. And so I'm just...
Well, I'm not sure if you heard from HPLO, I haven't. And so I'm not sure what they're asking the senators directly, but I know that they haven't...
Well, Miss, on during the budget process, so what I'm saying is there's a specific allocation in the budget for HPLO, for example, but that might not meet their needs. That's like a minimum allocation to them. They might need more and it looks to me like in the past they need more from the department. This is especially true because there are some boards that are not actually generating any revenue. They don't have their rules so they don't have fees in place or they need to update their fees, all of that. They need a lot of help with. But, so I'm just saying, there's specific allocations, yet they're going to need shifts.
If they're going to need help, then we're definitely going to look for the help and move the funding around, especially if I have the flexibility to move monies around within the divisions.
All right, there was also a discussion in the budget regarding allocations for or from the Health and Human Services Funds. There were attempted appropriations made that were not supported. But I just wanted to clarify, there was some testimony on the floor that you had objected to that funding from Health and Human Services Funds. It's a tobacco settlement money and the amendments were to use them for internships for licensed clinical, I think psychologists and things, social workers.
I was asked, we, the department, have never received funding from the Health and Human Service Fund. Actually, I was prepared for that because you guys spoke about it in the budget and I've been tracking the budget discussion. We, as the department, did not set up the rules and regulations and we have never realized or benefited from this fund. So I, if I'm not mistaken, this is a 1998 law that passed and I am unaware. And so we've never received funding from this fund that was created back in 1998. There were, there are no rules and regulations that have been established, to my knowledge.
All right, you might be right about the rules, but the money has actually been spent according to the audit. So there was several million dollars. It's down now to $400,000. So the appropriation was to appropriate, I mean, the amendment was appropriate to you. So while you don't have rules and regs, are you objecting to receiving money from the Health and Human Services Fund? This is supposed to be for tobacco or actually it says healthcare-related programs.
I saw the amendment, Madam Speaker, and it was psychiatry and psychologist. The only thing that public health would be even closely related to that would be the social workers.
It says clinical license, clinical, LCSW license, clinical, social workers, psychiatrist or psychologist, yes.
So the psychiatry and the psychologist, that would be Guam Behavioral Health. Social workers, we're always in need of social workers throughout our programs. And, and so it's not that I don't support it because if money comes my way, of course, we're happy. It's just...
That's why I was surprised, so that's why I'm asking you.
It's just that how can I spend something when there's no rules and regulations in place?
Because the legislature passed a law that says you can spend it for this purpose. There are, my understanding, in the community health centers supposed to also be addressing some mental health needs there.
Right, in partnership with Guam Behavioral Health.
Yeah, well, it's up to them, right?
Right.
But, all right. And then, and I had listened to the Community Health Centers Board talk about their wanting to address those needs as well. The, there was also some talk on the floor today about whether public health, it's part of their mandate to assist the homeless in shelter and food and medical care. And I don't want to misstate them, but one of my colleagues made it sound like, according to somebody at public health, and I'm not sure if that was you, that that is not their mandate.
We don't have a homeless program at public health, but we do help the homeless if they come in and apply for Medicaid or SNAP. So that's the way, I mean, they walk in and apply for SNAPs so they're, you know, if they're homeless, they're homeless, but they can still walk in and apply. But we don't have a homeless program.
Well, there is Chapter 17 in Title 10. It says assistance to the homeless. This program is administered by the Department of Public Health. It says its duty to provide shelter, food, and medical care. And as part of the, you know, and I was comparing it to the other shelters that public health had provided. So again, I'm just asking if you are adverse to money coming to public health to assist in homeless sheltering or food or medical care?
Not at all, of course. Like I said, we help the homeless through different programs that we run, but we don't have a, I don't have staff that is dedicated to stand up a homeless program. But if money comes my way, of course, I'm going to help. Are you talking about actually public health is going to be in charge of housing, sheltering them?
Well, it looks like that was, that was what's supposed to happen. They're supposed to contract shelter for the homeless, renovation or conversion of government-owned buildings for use as shelters, essential services to the homeless, including but not limited to services connected with employment, physical health, mental health, substance abuse, education or food. And I know that public health has always taken the lead in these homeless counts and many, many areas of the homeless coalition. And they've also are the leader on Guam in providing shelter to, in its capacity for children in need of shelter, women in need of shelter and many of those services. So, yeah.
Madam Speaker, we do administer the contract for Guama San Jose, if that's what you're referring to. That is contracted out by your service provider, Catholic Social Services.
Yes, so that was one of my examples. It is, is my understanding from reading this law that you are, it is part of the duties of public health. And so I'm clarifying the testimony that was made on the floor today or...
Whose testimony?
Well, one of my colleagues said they're talking to public health and that the public health, this is not part of their mandate. And that's why I wanted to clarify with you whether you believe that's part of your mandate is to assist the people of Guam with sheltering, food and medical services.
It's a part of my mandate.
All right, thank you. Are you familiar with, so as you talked about the community health centers and of course we've got the Northern One and I saw the announcement that there is a bid out now or a solicitation for a bid for those, the Northern Health Center expansion. And we've talked about the Southern Health Center and these were, you know, we were trying to update the laws for the Northern and Southern, well, the community health centers. These are all federally funded and we were told they were not in conformance with HERSA, which is a federal entity and a granting agency, I believe. So we tried to update the laws and we were told that our bill was reviewed by HERSA and later on it was vetoed and we were told this is not in compliance. So we've been waiting maybe since March 2024 for recommendations from public health as to how they believe this bill should be rewritten to make it in compliance with HERSA. They, it was their request when we started this process that they thought they needed to be in compliance with HERSA. I know that representatives from the federal agency were here and consulting with public health. I know that, of course, they consult by email. I know that staff from these community health centers have traveled to the states for consultation in this regard. And so I just want to follow up. It's, this was since March 2024 when the bill got vetoed. If there's any progress, because we've been asking and we haven't received a response as to any recommendations from HERSA.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, for that. March, I was not at the department and I'm not aware that there was any pending items that you needed, but now that I am, I'll get to it.
All right, thank you. So we talked at one point about the Central Health Center and I know Ms. Gay, in your testimony you referred to this. She also testified at a previous hearing on a bill to mandate that the public health department use the public health building in Mingila for community health. It's our understanding from testimony received there that that was shut down based on an alleged fire or harm. The reports that we received and read at the public hearing from the insurance company show no, no harm to the building. And so it was, it was at least four years at that time when, since the building had been closed, we heard that the equipment had been moved out, including the dental office and many other clinical services shut down or moved to the Northern Community Health Center and allocated into one room there as opposed to an entire clinic that they used to operate with X-ray machines, dental offices and many other equipment that had put into storage at the different Southern and Northern community centers pending return to Mingila. So I just want to ask you, you know, I know there's differences in the community as to how, you know, that's public health building and some other people in the community want to use it. But do you, do you intend to pursue opening of that Mingila Health Center as a central health clinic for the people of Guam?
At this point, no. It is deemed unsafe and so...
How do you know it's deemed unsafe? Because we've been following up with the Department of Public Works from the assessment of the building and to my knowledge, that assessment has never been done since it was shut down. And the insurance companies found no, no traces of harm to the building. So it's not been assessed despite the continued, I've been told continually, oh, we're going to put out the RFP, we're going to assess the building, but it's not been done yet. And you're deeming it unsafe.
I'm not doing the assessment, so I can't speak to that. But I know that, I know you referenced in the budget hearing that I stood, that I came before this body. You mentioned this, you brought this up. I also know that the reference that you keep referencing is of an insurance company, but I also know insurance companies don't want to pay. So I would rather err in the safety of the reason why they were, there was an electrical issue and the regulatory bodies like FIRE and EPA deemed it unsafe. And I'm sure that's why the then-director moved the entire department out. There had to be something happening. I know that you keep saying about the insurance letter says there's no fire, but if there's electrical problems, do we really want our staff to be in there with electrical problems? I don't think you or I would. So I don't, I don't know. Unless, until that assessment's done, I have no, I can't comment whether I'm going to allow my staff in there because they were removed for a reason.
Of course, I don't think anybody's advocating that anybody be moved in there, especially after it's been vacant for over four years, maybe five years or longer now, and until it is assessed. So that was what's supposed to happen, but that's why I'm just questioning you, your determination that you will not pursue moving a clinic back in there or restarting a central health clinic, even without an assessment you're making that determination?
The assessment needs to be done and I guess it will be done by the appropriate body or department. Until that happens, I'm, I'm not, you know, I'm not going to be moving anybody in.
All right, well, do you support the opening of a central health clinic?
Of course.
In what time?
As, as I stated in my testimony, I believe that 17 sites all over the island in three, in three villages is, you know, is very difficult for the consumers we serve. And so that's why I'm looking for, for a larger footprint that can hold all my divisions together. It's rather hard to manage things that are so far apart. I can't even call a management meeting without waiting for 45 minutes until everybody comes down to Agania. So just logistically, it's very difficult to try to break down silos and make sure that everybody, you know, we work together. And so as I stated, I'm looking for a larger footprint so that everybody can be together. Even, even if the Mingila, the original Mingila building was to be available, it would still take an assessment and a lot of upgrades, I'm sure, I believe, and before we can move in. So my immediate plans is to try to get everyone together, all six divisions, if possible, to be together and so we can work better together and more efficiently.
All right, yeah, those are, a lot of these are offices, right? The majority of what you're talking about. And I'm asking about the Central Health Clinic. So we have one in the north, we have one in the south and the one that has been we have one in the south, and the one that has been closed is the Mingilau Central Health Clinic, the largest of all of them, and really the one servicing most of the consumers. I'm trying to find the when they closed that, there was a, according to testimony, there was a significant reduction in the amount of services that public health has been able to provide because of that that closure. And, for example, no dental services have been provided because of that closure, and a huge reduction in women's care, maternal care, and child health care were also testified to. And, yeah, so, yeah, for example, the Northern and the Southern clinic, they don't necessarily need to be tied to your, you know, all the other offices for the elderly and and Medicaid and all the other services that you provide. And so that's why I'm asking about the Central Health Clinic.
Just for the clinic, sure. I mean, you know, we're all about access to care. So if we find a if if we find a a central location where we can open another clinic, then that's wonderful. But I think we're talking about two different things, right? You're talking about the clinic, and I'm talking about program staff.
Yeah, I'm talking about the clinic. I think for me, that's the priority, because it reduced from 12,747 to 8,331 total encounters when they closed that central clinic. And there was testimony as to the severe limitations in the Northern Health Clinic running the Central Health Clinic from the Northern Health Clinic, and how those programs had either ceased or diminished significantly. And so, yes, I believe that is a priority, and I'm trying to find out whether that's also your priority, or whether moving the offices is more of a priority, because I guess that can be done. That I don't have any objection to that. But pardon? And anyways, yeah, I'm just trying to get your feel for that.
Madam Speaker, I am very aware that you introduced a bill that regarding the clinic in Mingilau. And for the record, just so we don't belabor this.
For the Mingilau Public Health Building?
Yeah, for the Mingilau Public Health Building.
To be, yeah, utilized by public health again. Although I think it's public health, so they can utilize it whenever they want.
For the record, I am all for clinics for more access to the people we serve. But with regards to the Mingilau Clinic, I can't speak to that right now, because it is not occupo it's not deemed appropriate to be occupied, whether it's for my staff or the consumers that come in for clinical services. But if you're asking me if I believe that a central clinic is something that I believe in, absolutely. But I also believe that I need to bring my people together, which is a separate issue for the program offices.
The offices, sure. So on the one, the office that you're looking at to combine everybody, will that have a clinic in it? Is that is that your plan?
No, not at this moment.
All right. Okay, so that's just my concern, is that we closed one, we had three, and now we've closed one. And we we heard about the significant decrease in services. So it just makes sense to me that if three brings in a lot more patients and clients for public health, then we should do that. And this, I'm just talking about the clinic, including the dental services, the x-ray services, the pharmacies, all of it. All right. And all right, the last, can you give us an update on the or just an update if you're familiar with it, or or your thoughts on this? The so the Guma Mina Ase is the foster children's shelter.
Correct.
Public health and previous prior to you being there had many issues in obtaining a contract there. The plan was, as they do with other their other shelters, they they contracted out the services to run the shelters. Well, they had never done that because of different procurement issues. They got rejected several times and had to start again. So we've been following up with this over a year now, at very least, maybe two years. And they still seem, at least as of July 31, according to the Office of the Attorney General, the review had been completed, and the RFP was pending corrections from public health. So I sent you a letter on August 1, asking you what is the status of this contract? Because, again, we wanted to know whether this is going to be a priority of public health to contract this out, or to keep your social workers from CPS, or the other community service workers that they were hiring, like, limited term, to run this shelter?
It is a priority. And my understanding is it's currently at the AG's office. If you know some, perhaps you're more updated than I do, than than I have the information. But my understanding is we are definitely, we are not in the business of operating a shelter. So as in the past, all our shelters that is under our purview will be contracted out to a service provider. And so, as you stated, it's with the Attorney General's office.
No, I stated, according to the Attorney General, they had completed their reviews since July and sent it back to public health. So that's why I sent you a letter August 1. Did you, yeah?
I'm I'm not aware of the letter.
No response.
I'm not aware, but I'll look into it.
Okay, so I did send you a letter on August 1. Did you receive that?
I I did not. I've not, I'm actually surprised I haven't received a letter from any senator, unless I missed it.
Teresa C. Ariola at DPHSS Guam?
Teresa dot C dot.
Teresa dot C. Ariola, that's correct.
The C, the two dots between. Teresa dot C dot Ariola, yeah. Madam Speaker, I did not receive that, but I will definitely look for that now.
All right. And then on the RFP for for the assessment of the Mingilau Public Health Building, this one was, according to the Attorney General's website, pending, again, on March 15. I had received assurance from DPW on June 18 that that RFP would be released within 30 days. So that that I'm just hoping you can incorporate that in your plans, looking for.
Absolutely. I'll look into that and see where we're at and move that along.
So some of the plans that you talked about, to increase the hiring of environmental health inspectors, social workers, these are like government, I I agree with them, I support them, and we've been trying to help to public health with whatever recruitment or fast-track hiring for those, particularly those two, and of course, nursing, because they're always in need of nurses. So I support that, and I support any of your efforts in that regard. The, are you familiar with accessible van transportation services?
You're talking about Ben Servino's issue?
Yes, correct, that he has not been paid, that this is something, I don't know, he seems to be getting the runaround at public health, and I just want to know if you.
I'm fully aware of it, and he is not getting the runaround. Unfortunately, Mr. Servino is not satisfied with the answer. He has been told multiple times before he started as a vendor, what Medicaid will cover and what Medicaid wouldn't cover. And unfortunately, some of the services that he's seeking payment is not something that Medicaid covers. So we have been in constant contact with Mr. Servino, and he is fully aware of the services that we will cover, that his business provides, and the services that we don't cover. And that's just in our Medicaid state plan. So he hasn't been given the runaround. He's been spoken to many, many, many times.
So you're saying that you've given him a formal, we'll cover this, not that?
Absolutely.
All right, because he says he has talked to the different directors, including Art Solangstein, Peter John Camacho, Terry Uggan.
He has not spoken to me.
Former Medicaid Administrator Carlos Pangolinen. When it seemed like the challenges were going to be resolved, another challenge or issue arises. Director Arthur informed him that he forwarded his concerns to you, the newly appointed director, and he has he said he understands you're still being acclimated with all the various programs, and he's just sounds like waiting for a response, so.
Madam Speaker, I am certain of it, because I'm aware of it, and I've asked my staff about it. And they have reassured me that Mr. Servino has been time, multiple times told what services that he provides that will be covered by Medicaid, and what services wouldn't.
All right, so the the ones that will be covered, is are they going to cover?
They're covered.
Are they going to be paid?
I I'm assuming they are already paid. He's concerned about the about some of the invoices that we didn't cover, because it wasn't, it's not part, it's not covered. So we're not going to pay things that is not covered. I think he's trying to get them covered. And unfortunately, it's very clear what Medicaid covers and what Medicaid doesn't cover. So.
Okay, I'm going to open it up for the rest of the panel at this point. Senator Canata?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Good evening, colleagues. Good evening to those listening. Good evening to all of you that have taken out the time of your busy schedules to be here, present, most especially to your family, your husband. It's very much supportive of your your appointment here from the governor. I certainly know that you've touched many lives throughout your career. Your services to the island are very much appreciated by many. I know that this journey you're taking on is going to be a really a real challenge and an uphill battle. I wish you all the best on this endeavor. But GMH seems to be having difficulty with its billings and collection. Do you think your department has any advice in helping apply its Medicaid and MIP programs? And simply put it, can you help us collect more revenues for GMH to catch up?
Thank you, Senator Canata. The automated payment eligibility and payment system that I talked about, that we are going to be getting online in less than a year, is definitely going to help that situation.
Thank you so much for that update. Are there any grant funds that you're you guys are tracking that are due to expire?
Off the top of my head, I'm sure we have hundreds of grants, and there are grants that are going to expire in a year's time, or maybe some grants will be expiring by the end of the fiscal year. So there are, there's hundreds of grants going on at public health. So I'm sure there's grants that are ending this fiscal year.
Is there a reason for them pending renewal?
Some grants are not renewable. They're not lock grants. They're one-time discretionary grants.
Okay, thank you. In regards to vital statistics, I brought this up in a previous hearing. You know, it's very awkward for you to wait in the hot sun on the Rad Care voting, right? So I'm wondering if there's any movement. I understand that there is an employment shortage over there. But I wanted to know if there's any way we can perhaps digitize the certificate certificates process. Also, there's been some difficulty with certain constituents regarding death certificate notice or their receivership of death certificates. So I'm just wondering if what are the issues that we can possibly address?
Thank you. So the technology I talked about, about public health being so outdated in its technology, is is something that you're addressing, is the reason. So when we go automating, automation, which is very, very soon, you're going to see that a lot of those issues, a lot of the delays is due to outdated technology and processes. And so, once we correct that, which is, I'm very, very hopeful and excited about, in less than a year, you're going to see that a lot of things are going to improve when technology works for us.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
You've pretty much answered all my other questions, just based on your opening statement. So I don't really have anything further. At this time, I've exhausted my questions. So I yield the rest of my time, and thank you so much for your service. My office remains open to supporting you and your initiatives or the agencies. Thank you again.
Thank you.
This is Mr. Sen. Senator Canata. Senator Luhan?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Good evening, Ms. Earl. How you doing this evening?
Thank you, Senator.
And thank you very much for accepting the governor's appointment and stepping up to the plate, of course, an agency with many challenges. But thank you very much for that. You know, I just want to ask a couple of questions. I definitely support your your appointment and be getting my support.
Thank you.
But let me ask a couple of questions, because we couldn't get answers for this in the midst of this budget hearing. Now, the the building down in Hessler, the old legislative building, that's a government building, right?
Bought by the government, run by Department of Administration, correct.
Okay. Because in a previous hearing, Department of Veterans Affairs had had said that they were going to be moving into that building, like, soon. And so, but we haven't heard about public health moving out of there. And if you guys are moving out, where are you moving to, and how soon would that be?
As I stated in my testimony, I'm looking, it's currently, the RFP is being reviewed at GSA, and unfortunately, we there's, we can't coexist, because there's so many of us at Hessler. So we were going to, we're going to need to move out before Veterans Affairs moves in. And we're doing that as quickly as possible. But it's going through the RFP process that I'm waiting for right now.
Okay. You paying rent that building?
We're paying maintenance and, you know, kind of like common area fee.
Okay, for Hessler, right?
For Hessler, correct. We're paying our share of being in the building.
Because you have historic preservation that's there as well, right?
Yes, we share.
No, the the reason why I'm asking this, because we're trying, we're trying to figure this out, or tried to figure this out. DOA has issued an invoice quoting building rental for Department of Public Health Social Service, the tune of $23,266 a month that is supposed to be paid on a monthly basis to DOA. The $23,266 times 12, again, send here at Mountain Dew, $279,192. Utilities in this invoice that DOA had sent, utilities are at $20,952 times 12, is 251, or 251,424. Water comes to $5,223, times 12, is $62,856, showing $593,452 annually invoiced to, you know, we're wondering who it's invoiced to, and who we're paying.
They're invoicing us.
Okay, invoicing you, okay.
And and public health.
Okay.
And each program has share of square footage, which is a normal, a normal situation, where we're paying, we pro-rate the square footage in which we we live in.
Okay. Is it being paid, then, out of public health to DOA?
Absolutely, or federal funds, actually, mostly federal funds.
Federal funds is paying that, okay, okay. Because we're not seeing anything in Office of Finance and Budget, doesn't see any payables as well, it's not showing anything being paid. And so, yeah, we're just wondering, because there's no requests for for this in the budget. So we're just wondering, you know, who's paying?
It's probably federal dollars. I don't, I don't have my budget with me.
Okay, okay. Yeah, is it?
So it's probably federal dollars paying for the allocation.
Okay, alongside alongside the power and water, too, and all that?
Sure, all pro, all grants, you you allocate that out in grants budget.
Would that, would that mean that the star preservation is being paid out of federal dollars, too? Because they're.
I don't know. I can't speak for them.
They're showing $684 a month, and power $616, and water $154, which comes to $17,448. dollars a month, so, yeah.
I'm not sure.
And that's not showing, it's not showing either. So we're just wondering how and what category that's listed because it's not showing that revenue is being received. It's not also showing on the DOA site that that's revenues being brought in, so.
Can't speak to it, sorry.
No, I, I, I understand, I understand. And so, that was, because when we see this invoice, as we're going, okay, nothing's being, nothing is being requested from the, from the agency. And DOA is not showing any, any receivables from, from there as well. And Office of Finance and Budget has no idea where this money is at, what is being done with it and all that, so. So that building, was that building then bought by federal funds?
I don't know.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah. DOA would know.
And yeah, you're not the right person to ask. You just came in, so, but can you find out and if you can let us know?
Sure.
Please, please, yeah. And maybe you can refer that information to Office, to Steve Guerrero. And we got more information on, yeah, because we have no information. I mean, we're not, we're not short in the revenues, but we're just wondering because we're seeing all these invoices and, and, yeah, that's, that's a lot of money. And it's not being requested, it's not showing it's being generated. We don't know where, where this is at. But anyway, I think that's, that's all I have, Madam Chair. But thank you and congratulations on your, your appointment and I, I will be supporting your, of course, your confirmation.
Thank you, Senator.
This is Massey, Senator Lujan. Senator Taitikwe?
Thank you, Madam Speaker, Madam Chair. And my colleague's still here, huh? We've been here since eight-thirty in the morning with budget and then most of us are hanging out here and making sure that we show, you know, that we're here and that we believe that your time is very important. And wanted to be here to at least, you know, show that we are, our doors are open for you. And a lot of the questions that we have, you know, have been asked by the speaker and my other colleagues. So I greatly appreciate, so I'm not going to belabor this too much because I know everybody's hungry and wants to go home to, for dinner. But that being said, like I said, most of them are covered. But just to, to tag on a little bit from Senator Lujan's question with regards to the Hessler Building, you said the Hessler Building is a government of Guam building, correct?
Correct.
It's owned by the government of Guam?
Owned by the government, well.
I, see, that's what I need to know because why are we paying rent for a government of Guam building?
Because we all have to pay our fair share of living in a space.
So then, DOA, the government of Guam owns the building or is it a private building that we're leasing from, a private person?
Senator, I, with regards to the building and who bought it and what, I think it's more appropriate that you ask DOA because I'm just a tenant of DOA.
It just makes me wonder because if DOA is seeking rent, then why don't they move out of ITC building and move into that building and, you know, get rent free? You know, I just don't understand.
In ITC?
Well, they, if they own, do, no, that's what I'm saying. Move out of ITC that they're renting and spending full of bucks a month and move into Hessler if they own that building and they're charging you for rent. So I just don't understand if it's owned by the government of Guam or is it, we're leasing from a private, you know, vendor that owns the building, so, and you're not sure on that.
I'm a tenant.
Yeah.
I'm a tenant of, and, and every program, federal dollars pays a fair share.
Right.
And it's inclusive to utilities.
Asking Director, I just wanted to know if you knew that. You don't know if it is really owned by the government of Guam, so I'll, I'll look into that.
I'm understanding it is, it is.
I'll look into it. Not a problem. The other one is, I appreciate your testimony, quite extensive, and you did go through a lot of things. I'm very excited about this one-stop service center that you made, you mentioned. There are quite a bit of people who have difficulty from traveling from one set to another, so I hope you make this immediately, you know, creating this one-stop. So please.
Thank you so much.
Yes. Please hurry on that.
As soon as I can get an RFP out.
Okay, I appreciate it. The other one is the ARP funding. The ARP money that was provided to the public, um, public health with the senior service was six-hundred-and-eight thousand, seven-hundred-and-fifty-seven and eighty-two cents. Your expenditure on that was six-hundred-and-seventy-two thousand, seven-hundred-and-thirty-six and eighty-three cents. That is an over expenditure of sixty-three thousand, nine-hundred-and-seventy-nine. And that's in the latest report that I received from the ARP funding of money given to public health, particularly just into the senior service center. How are you going to be able to recover this cost or find the money to subsidize the over expenditure of ARP funding of sixty-three thousand, nine-hundred-and-seventy-nine?
Senator, I'm sorry, I, I'm not prepared for budgetary questions. I didn't bring my budget with me.
Oh, this is not, this is not the budget, my friend. This is money that's been provided to public health for the last four years in ARP funding. This is money that's on a daily basis.
Okay.
That comes into your, your office. And there's an over expenditure in the ARP funding for the senior center for sixty-three thousand, nine-hundred-and-seventy-nine. And I was just wondering if you're, if you're aware of this?
I am aware and we're moving monies around using resources, lapses, to cover any expenses. If you're talking about the need to find funding to cover for senior citizen services, we're doing that today.
Okay.
With our lapses.
Well, public health also received separately apart from the senior service, they received twelve million, six-hundred-and-six, twelve million, six-hundred-and-seventy-six thousand, one-hundred-and-four. And they expended to date ten million, seven-hundred-and-seventy-three thousand, uh, one-hundred-and-four. So you, and then just this month, you, or July, you've encumbered only a thousand of that. That's leaving you a balance of one-point-eight million, nine-hundred-and-ninety-nine thousand dollars in your pocket. Now, you know that ARP funding has a lifeline of only to the end of this year to be encumbered. I've noticed that this money has not been encumbered at all and it's still sitting there. Now, do you have the ability to maybe transfer some of this money into the over expenditure of the senior service center of the sixty, sixty-three mil, sixty-three thousand dollars? And what are you planning, so let me load this a little bit more. And what are you planning on using the one-point-eight my, eight, one-point-eight million, nine-hundred-and-ninety-nine for at public health?
I received one-point-nine million for technology. And we are not, that's the technology I talked about in my presentation. So that's probably where the balance is, is because ARPA.
Or the balance is going.
Absolutely.
Okay. Not is, but going. Okay, but it's, usually says encumbered and there's nothing in the report?
It's not encumbered yet because we haven't procured the services.
Okay, so you plan on using that full amount for those areas?
Before the sunset, yes.
Okay, and what area again in your?
Public welfare. I, I believe they made a copy, right? And you should be receiving it. So if you, if you go to the public welfare page, you'll see I mentioned one-point-nine.
One-point-nine, that's a little.
One-point-nine million dollars of ARPA funding was given to us to improve technology for eligibility and enrollment as well as SNAP.
Was that recently? Was that recently or how long ago?
Last year.
Oh, just last year?
Last year was given to us, if I'm not.
Well, this ARP funding came to you earlier than that, than just last year, the twelve million that was submitted to public health.
Okay.
So if this is new money from ARP, it's not indicated in the ARP report that's due to us every month, so we can follow along. Even it's very important for us because that way it helps us find out how we can help budget your, your department and provide the funding needed in areas that you fall short on. So I think the, the concern I have here is that you have one-point-eight million in, that's not encumbered, that's still a balance, and you have sixty-three thousand of over expenditure. So there needs to be some adjustment, you know? Hopefully you can get that done in the next month under the ARP report. And I'm looking forward to whatever document that you said you submitted to provide us. And when you, when did you receive that one-point-nine million from the government of Guam? I'd like to know that date.
Sure.
And. That information?
Sure.
Okay, because that would, that should have reflected in, in the ARP report. And I'm just seeing the same twelve million that was provided to public health and no movement other than that. Okay? Tobacco tax was already, I mean, tobacco settlement money was already spoken about. And last, lastly, I'm sorry, it has gotten a little bit longer. In Article two of Chapter nineteen-two-zero, I mean, Article two, Chapter nineteen, Section nineteen-two-zero-two, Public Health Emergency, A Plan in Responding to Public Health Emergency. Now, we all went through COVID and public health played a huge, huge role in, in COVID and preparing our island for such a state. And one of the things that lacked was a plan to be put in place. Public health, under your jurisdiction in the chapter, states that it gives you the ability to prepare a plan for any kind of disaster or, and because we really didn't have, we weren't prepared for COVID, I hope that you're going to be proactive in preparing this plan that's going to be needed because if we are all thinking that this is the last time we're going to have some type of virus, hit, hit us, right, tumor? Then, then we're all dreaming. Because if it happens once, it can definitely happen again. And this time, we need to be more prepared for this island, for something like this. So it gives you the ability in your, in this chapter under public health to create a plan. It, it brings in the other agencies. So I think public health, because you have the ability to, to call a state of emergency and you get confirmation from the governor, to at least have some kind of plan so, you know, you can prepare in the event something else happens.
I am fully aware that the Department or Bureau of Plans and Stats has pulled the team together and Margaret shaking her head because I remember this, because they had to pull us in at behavioral health. And so there is a plan. And so.
And, and, and that plan, I, I'm hope you can share with the legislature as well or if there's anything we can do to, you know, oversee something like this, it'd be very helpful. But it is under your, it, it is under your chapter, under public health, that this plan be formulated and put together. So it's definitely under your jurisdiction for that one. And other than that, so proactive, proactive, you know, that's my only advice. And, you know, I'm sure that with all your experience, being at behavioral wellness, you'll bring a lot of that to the, to the table. I'm hoping you do. So.
I will.
Good luck to you as well and appreciate that your family, Vince is agreeing you to be, to allowing you to be in this position.
Just needs your support.
Yeah, yep, to, because you definitely need that support, especially the two of you hold huge agencies in the government of Guam as a couple, so.
I need your support.
Yeah. Oh, my support? Yeah, you'll, you'll hear it on the floor. Okay, I'm putting these together. But again, I'd like to get those, that information about the, Madam Chair, the one-point-nine million that was provided, that I don't see anywhere in the ARP funding. So thank you again. Thank you.
Good luck. This is Massey, Senator Taitikwe. Senator Brown?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Good evening to all of you. I know it's a couple hours later since we started. Certainly appreciate your extensive presentation on your testimony before the committee. There are a few issues also I would like to ask that I've been concerned about, and you have a tremendous challenge. I'm glad you're willing to step up to the plate. Public health in particular has been a concern for a number of us, quite simply because we've seen such a decrease in capacity to serving the very customers out there, constituents, shall we say, that are the most needy. And that's something we cannot hide. It's the department itself that brought to this legislature earlier this year, the data with regards to the decrease, substantial decrease in some categories of outreach that has happened in the community. And, you know, politics always has a way of raising its ugly head. I think the whole controversy that we have with regards to the Mangilo facility is probably the main reason that we are where we are today. I, like you, was a young person once upon a time. We used to ride our bus from Price Elementary School up to the very brand-new at the time public health facility to get our, our dental checkups. And it's also your public health employees that are publicly brought to the attention of ourselves and the community. There's a result of not having a functional facility, they've not been able to provide that outreach. And I think ultimately, that should be the mission. The mission should always be to increase capacity and increase the service that we're providing. This administration ran on a whole agenda that it was going to improve healthcare. With regards to public health, we are seeing that has not consistently been the case. I think we see that with regards to the school inspections. I mean, for us in the legislature, for it to be brought to our attention that there was no consistent inspections by public health with regards to these school facilities is very concerning, not to us, but I'm sure to all the parents that have children in the public school system. I know it has been a painful process of getting into compliance with that. I think that was both the responsibility of, of Department of Education and public health and not meeting that requirement. And you saw a few weeks ago with the Guam Legislature, we pretty much said, you know, enough is enough. We are not going to allow the continued operation of these schools without proper inspection. And we do appreciate the efforts on both sides, including your public health staff, of increasing capacity and bringing other resources together to help facilitate so we can ensure that our children, our public schools are in a safe environment. The issue of the building, though, I have to tell you, I'm going to say this, I said this to your predecessor, I'm going to relay this also. And this is where politics, as I mentioned, rears its ugly head. I've been in a building that was destroyed by fire on the first floor at the Port Authority of Guam, where the walls literally were burned down to nothing. And the entire building was damaged because of the result of the smoke. And we had major, major damage that had to be cleared up, replaced and rebuilt to make sure we had a functional facility. I have not, in the information that's been provided to us, gotten any impression that that's what happened to public health. And the fact that there was this major exodus without any attempt over now going on four into five years of addressing, how can that facility be rehabilitated and be put back into use, especially when we're not meeting the support out in the community, to me, has always brought a big question mark. So I just think that's something that is of concern to us, not just the Speaker in introducing her bill, but the fact that a lot of money now is being spent on rental, which is unnecessary. I'd rather see that money reinvested back in a government facility that's going to serve our people without continuing to take this money to pay rental, be it to Department of Administration, which we really need to figure that one out, and just to anyone else. So I realize you, you have your position, you're in a situation you're walking into that's already there, but I certainly wanted to relay, that's a concern for us. This doesn't make a lot of sense. I mean, if that was my private real estate, I don't think I'd be leaving it sitting up there. And we knew that in spite of the fact, and, you know, the building was built with no windows, of course, that was a, that was a Simon Sanchez model back in the early seventies. The fact that you're, the department's inability to have met that requirement of providing the space for employees and more importantly, not being able to ensure that they can increase support capacity out the community, to me is a major red flag. So I hope that can be addressed. I hope we're not going to hear no activity in that building. I hope we're not going to have to wait two years till the next administration comes in to actually address that building. Because I, I'm not settled with any of the explanations, not from your predecessor and not this evening and what you've relayed with regards to that building. I think a lot of people are looking at it as a wasted resources, wasted resources that is essentially not being renovated and put back into use. The longer that building has sit there, the more it's going to cost to address it. But I've not seen a proactive position by any director of this current administration to relay what they're going to do to rehabilitate that building and get it back into operation so we can move on. So I just want to relay that caution. The other area that I have concern that has come up is the issue with regards to our foster children. We had a situation within the past year of where we had a foster child that was in the care of a foster parent that is alleged to have sexually molested that child. And that was a concern. We brought that up and discussed that certainly in hearings here. Of course, we can't get into detail about this particular case. But the concern I have and have had, and also because information is provided to me by foster parent who actually has a foster child in the system, that there's not consistent visits to the homes of these children. I understand that, you know, especially during COVID, there was a substantial increase in the amount of foster children, went over six-hundred, understandable, limited resources, limited staff. But I'm very concerned that when these children are in the custody of the government of Guam, we have an expectation that to every ability that we can to ensure their safety and well-being, that that's something that we can have some confidence that public health is helping to address, especially if we're taking them into our custody. And that has not consistently been the case. I've had that foster parent inform me that the only contact they've had with the representative from public health is when they're called prior to a court case to inquire the status of the child, which means there's been no physical visit to ensure or verify that the child's in. child's in a safe environment. Particularly, young children may not have a way of articulating if they're being harmed. And that's an unfortunate, sad reality. You know, appearances can be one thing, but what's behind that can be very different. So I want to get your feedback on what we can do to address that, recognizing the challenges. But again, I think we all want to ensure that these children are safe for the time they're in our custody, particularly from sexual abuse or any other type of abuse to these children.
Absolutely. I'm with you. I, too, would not tolerate it. And my understanding is we make regular visits. I don't know particularly the situation that you're talking about, whether it's a recent situation or something that happened earlier in the year. But I know that I asked that question when being briefed before the budget hearing in June, because I think it was in the news around that time. And I was told that regular visits happen. So the best I can do is ensure and make sure I'll follow up and find out that it is happening. But I am told that it, regular visits to our foster parents' homes are happening.
I would encourage, and it's been my experience, to verify. I mean, I always appreciate, you know, employees telling me this is happening and this is happening, and the world is wonderful.
Sure.
But I think you just need to take that extra step. You can randomly select whatever case you want to review, but I think it's important to verify. I understand there's limited resources, but again, if we are taking these children into our custody, of course, to the best of your ability to assess. I know additional requirements have been put in place to evaluate these individuals that are accepting the challenge of being foster parents. And we've gone through that discussion. We're even wondering if we should formalize those requirements. But it's been a concern. And again, if a foster parent's going to tell me that, you know, I've not been contacted or my child's not been visited, you know, fortunately, that child's in the hands of a good foster parent, but that may not always be the case. And again, we know these children come from challenging circumstances, sometimes from abusive circumstances, and they are not in a position to protect themselves. Or the reason we've got to make sure we have the resources in place and the follow-up in place to ensure that they're protected. I don't have too many others. Those are my key issues of concern that I have. I mean, we certainly appreciate all the efforts you've brought forth with Behavioral Health and kicking that up to the next standard, the next level that we've not seen, and also just having people be comfortable. I mean, the issue you brought up with regards to particularly the suicide, to be able to have someone to call in and talk to. You might be surrounded by people all the time. They might not be people you want to say, this is my deepest worry that I have, and discuss that. But to have that accessibility, certainly, I'm sure is helping and saving a lot of people. You have a tremendous challenge, Mrs. Areola, in a very short period of time. You have just a little over two years to make that difference. And we certainly look forward to hearing the improvements. We appreciate the dynamics. I mean, it's something to take a department that doesn't have that positive sense of infusion. Because again, politics always raises, particularly on Guam, because we're in such a small community. But if you can motivate people to do well, they will come up to the challenge. And I know Public Health certainly, in the work that all of you've done, particularly during the, going through COVID, I mean, I'm sure it was all hands on deck, whether you were from that division in Public Health, everybody came to the table to help our community get through a challenging time. I wish every government agency had the dynamics, because it's amazing, the things you can get out of your people. If they feel they're in a professional environment, they're respected, they're supported, there's a lot you can do. So we wish you well. I just wanted to, I'm sure we've all brought up the key issues that are concerned to us that we'd like to see addressed and improved upon, but that's life, that's always expected. So certainly wish you well in your appointment. I'm sure you'll be confirmed, but we will be watching. We look forward to seeing better things happening at Public Health under your leadership. Thank you very much for coming and providing your testimony. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Brown.
Thank you, Senator Brown. Yeah, so for my closing questions, I just wanted to commend, I guess, your work at Behavioral Health. I've always commended that. I think you really maximize programs and the way that they are running on Guam for the benefit of our community. I've never questioned that. I commend your, in your testimony today, your plan for, and your immediate change of the working hours. There were as many complaints about some of those, just not being customer-friendly. But I know, you know, we're short-staffed in so many areas, so I know you've had to work all of these together, all these concerns with the issues that you face as well. The customer service training, the pursuing grants, I have full confidence that you will help the rest of the excellent Public Health team in pursuing these grants, so I'm very much looking forward to that. And the ones that you've mentioned already today, that just sounds excellent, as well as the maximizing Medicaid, of course, and with what all the resources that you can avail of. That has really been the key for our improved community access to care. There is a lot of things in progress, environmental health, the both of the lab construction, of course, all of these have started. So this is all very good. Yeah, I'm just sharing with you, the, I guess, continued concerns are, for me, is, and these are based again on concern from the community, testimony that we've received, and, for example, Margarita Gay, longtime employee of Public Health, over, administrator since 2005, but I don't even know how many years she's been there, many, many years. But we talked about, this is the Central Public Health Center that she manages. It's temporarily at the Northern Health Center. This, along with other programs, because of moving out of Mingilao. So while you consider, you know, consolidating all of your offices into one, I just want you to consider if this RFP, as promised by DPW, is supposed to be coming out soon to assess the building, that you might want to know the status of the building and how much it's going to cost to fix it up, for what purposes it might be useful. Particularly because we were encouraged that, you know, this is the result of closing that building, that services for women, for maternal care, childcare, and so many other services decreased, an overall decrease from 12,700 to 8,000 clients. And there, that part of the testimony was, in addition to these other services that were in that building, including, of course, the birth certificates, the health certificates, the Women, Infants, and Children's WIC programs, applications for public assistance programs, preventative health screenings like HIV, STD, infectious disease services and treatments for tuberculosis, Hansen's Disease and STDs. The Central Regional Health Center facility gave access to patients for a lab, an x-ray, and pharmacy, and dental services, all in, at the one clinic. And again, some of those equipment were just moved to storage because we have not opened the dental services since we closed there. X-ray still in storage, my understanding, that type of thing. And while we struggle to maximize services at the Northern and the Southern, these are still just coming back into full service after COVID. And they are, you know, kind of independently run as well, with their own additional challenges, such as the HERSA compliance that we need to comply with. The, it says, "Patients can avail of free pregnancy testing, eligible for early prenatal care, free counseling for family planning, free hearing testing, home visiting services. Most common service is free childhood immunization clinics." The clients all over Guam knew where the programs were located, their hours of operation, and the fees for the services, and the majority knew what most of the services these programs provided. So if it's possible, one of my colleagues testified as to, like, half a million dollars being paid for Hessler right now, and of course, I'm sure you're going to look for savings, cost savings, and as well as customer service convenience. Some of this is not convenient at all, to be all over the place, but my concern, so I trust that you'll take care of all of that. My concern is this, while we're trying to maximize the Northern and the Southern, expanding the Northern because of the need in the North, that we also maximize services that were very, very convenient for them in the Central. And if I could ask you, the dental services, so you're going to hire a dentist, you're going to hire a dental coordinator and a dental program coordinator, you're going to look into a dentistry resident program, this is to help recruit, and then you're going to purchase with the help of USDA, a Public Health Dental Mobile Unit? Do you intend to set up a permanent stationary dental clinic?
Absolutely. I mean, you know, we want to, we want to start this up again and make it permanent. My understanding, there was a fragmented dentistry program a couple years ago, but as funding, I guess it was, it was supported mostly by federal funding. As those fundings sunsetted, there was no additional funding that came on board. And so, of course, when we start up the dentistry program, the idea is to keep it going. So yes, I mean, the idea is to make it permanent.
Like, in a place, a location? Because, yeah, I think I helped celebrate the retirement of the last dentist that Public Health had employed. And my understanding is that since then, they have not employed one, so I'm glad you're pursuing that. But again, closure of the building was really what stopped all services.
So the dentistry with the population in the North, it just makes sense that any permanent dentistry and dentist program, the greatest impact would be in the North. So with the Northern clinic being there and moving out programs, you know, the program offices, that will allow real estate to be available for more clinical services like dentistry and other, like the program that I mentioned about the executive checkup program that I'm working with.
Yeah, I was going to ask about that next. But yeah, so my understanding is that these Northern and Southern community health centers are independently supposed to be governed by their boards, and that they are also supposed to be providing these services to the community, including mental health, dentistry, and many others, lab pharmacies. However, yeah, this is, in addition to those community health centers which are run by their boards, the, yeah, this, there will be, are you saying there will be no other dentistry programs, only what is run by the community health centers, not by Public Health? Or the Central?
Well, the programs will be at the clinics. So any dentistry program that is set up will be part of the clinic.
Okay. Maybe, you know, just consider this, Director, and we can discuss this more, but after you talk about it with your team, but part of the HERSLA concerns is the governance of these community health center boards. So they're supposed to be governed independently of all of us with their boards, and so, and they are very much willing to do that and want to do this, and that's really, I think, what's holding us back from finalizing, yes, those...
I'll get you that information that you're talking about.
Yeah, those, updating their, their...
Standards.
Yes, and their laws here on Guam. But I'm thinking in my mind that there's a separation a little bit between the community health centers and what, and the public health services that you might be able to also get grants and other things for, right? Like, such as the dentistry. In addition to the Northern and the Southern, unless the community health center's board, and I've proposed this to them, you know, they take over the Central Health Clinic. If Public Health doesn't want to do it, that they open, they open another one, Northern, Southern, and Central. But, so the other program that you talk about, this primary care, executive checkup, this will be in addition to the services at the Northern Health Center, you're saying?
Yes.
Again, so this is not, so this is a Northern Health Community Center program? Or is this a Public Health program?
No, it'll be a Public Health, that it will be, it will be a Public Health service, similar to when people go off-island to get an executive checkup. So it's being put together, our discussions with Dr. Jolene Ugin, is to set up and out, within the Public Health Clinics, a certain service, a part of the profile services.
Is this to maximize Medicaid reimbursement, or is this because the community health centers fund these types of programs?
It is a way to ensure if people want to get executive checkups, to try to get them into the clinics. So it's just an added service, array of service, that people would want to access. So some people want an executive checkup, and so we're hoping that they will come into the Public Health Clinics and get that, and choose to get an executive checkup that's comprehensive for all the services that it's included, instead of just coming in for a doctor's visit, but coming in maybe annually for an executive checkup, like we do when people go off-island.
Okay, yeah. Maybe you can clarify whether this is going to maximize Medicaid reimbursement by providing this service that's not currently provided, or whether it's going to bring in additional revenue that we're not bringing in right now, that's totally separate. And again, for this as well, I'm just, I just want to make sure that we are very clear on what it is that Public Health is pursuing versus the community health centers. Because I think this, the overlap is, it just has to be clarified, in my understanding, according to HERSA. And then, so for this OB-GYN that we're pursuing as well, it says, medical providers, OB-GYN, experience or specialty at the health clinics. Again, I guess just the same thing. Of course, we, I'm excited about that, but I know that the community health centers have also been talking about recruiting. So I just want to, I just want to understand what the community health centers are doing versus what Public Health is going to be doing separate from the community health.
After the bill, after the separation.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. All right. But again, a lot of the hard work of the employees has, yeah, I think with your help, it can really come to fruition, a lot of these things that they've been talking about for some, in some cases, for many years. I really do invite your attention to the HPLO, making sure it gets what it needs. It's being funded at like $300,000. This is based on fees, but I think it needs a lot more. It's got 10 boards, as you said. We have an ethics commission that's running at half a million dollars, so we just...
Definitely, definitely, if HPLO is going to, is in need of help, I'm going to be moving funding around, so I do appreciate the flexibility in the budget.
Yeah, and you're correct, that fixing the website and all of that, enhancing. Any delays in this licensing of that, I think, has really impacted our provision of services, so I do welcome your attention to that as well. So I'm very grateful for that. Would you like to make any closing statement?
No, I just, I want to thank the senators that came. I know there's a lot of senators that didn't show up, but has WhatsApped to me or told me of their support. So I thank you, Madam Speaker, Committee Chair, for hearing my confirmation. I am a bit concerned because my confirmation is up in September 9th, and so I hope that we'll be able to, I'm not sure, we'll be able to get this on the agenda for this session. I'm not sure how we're going to handle it, but I thank you for having this confirmation hearing, and for the senators who did attend, thank you so much. And thank you so much to, I'm very moved, and I really thank my staff at Public Health, every single division chief, and many bureau heads are here. And that speaks volumes, and I'm so grateful for your support. So thank you, staff. Family and friends, thank you. And I'm sorry, Vince is buying dinner.
That's great. Thank you. Thank you again.
Thank you so much.
Yes, we did try to, we realized that the acting capacity is 90 days, but it doesn't, I think, we're going to try to move it, of course, but yeah, we've had inter-budget in the middle of all of this, so we're trying our best.
I appreciate your support too, Madam Speaker.
So for those who've testified, or who want to testify, we will continue to accept written testimony until, actually, close of business tomorrow. testimony until, actually, close of business tomorrow, which is August 27th at 5:00 PM. You can submit that to the Guam Congress Building here to my attention or to senator There being no further testimony, the confirmation hearing for the appointment of Teresa Ariola to serve as the Director of the Department of Public Health and Social Services at the pleasure of the Governor is hereby duly heard. And this public hearing is now adjourned and it is about 7:55 PM.
Thank you so much.